You good?
Yep.
All right, let's call the meeting to order. I'm not a Catholic. I guess we'll take a roll call, please.
John?
Here.
Tony?
Here.
Andy?
Here.
Matt?
We need to approve the minutes from August 7th. Does anybody have any corrections from your review there on the minutes?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move to approve the Attorney Commission meeting minutes from August 7th through 25.
Got a notion? Second? Second?
John?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes, I will pass down for signatures and make sure I get it back, please.
I'll do the announcements and statement of policy here and then we'll get rolling. The meeting this evening will conclude at 9:30. Any unfinished business will be continued to the October 2nd, 2025, meeting at 7:00 p.m. Here at 1454 Rome Corner Road. Statement of policy as it is adopted. Policy of the Berkshire Township Zoning Commission, all applicants will be granted an opportunity to make their formal presentation. Following the applicant's presentation, preliminary questions or points of clarification from the commission will be allowed. The audience will then be granted an opportunity to comment. Each individual will be granted three minutes. We ask that you be brief and to the point. The chair may limit repetitive comments and close public comments after a reasonable time. The commission will ask questions and take action if needed. I guess we're on to new business for application 25-086, House Corporation, Berkshire Retail Plaza.
Check, check. Check, there we go. All right, good evening, members of the zoning commission. My name is Phil Morehead with G2 Plenty Design. I'm a NetSafe Architects. We're located at 720 East Broad Street in Conestello, 43215. Joined tonight by Mr. Vincent Stefano of Berkshire Architects, our architect for the project. Scott Wintock of the CAS Corp, owner's representative. And we have Jeff Goodman Miller of Vanceville Design, civil engineer for the project. I assume you probably remember us all from our last meeting. So I'm going to try and limit the presentation to some of the refinements we've made to the plan since we last met. I also want to start out by stating that, you know, we want to apologize for any appearance of disrespect or insult with our last minute introduction of new site plans and events at the last meeting. We're just used to trying to turn on a dime. We wanted to try and be as responsive as possible to the comments that we received. And we wanted to have a dialogue with you guys about that. We feel like it was a productive meeting, so hopefully you will agree that revisions we have made have been in the spirit of the conversation that we had last time. So with that, I don't know if this summary here is eligible to you. I do have an extra copy of that if you would like to review it. So if you have objections, I can pass that out when official exhibit.
Sure.
I will label that as exhibit 941 for the meeting.
So just for brief background, I think we're familiar with the site. We are a former service station. We are proposing to pull down the PFBD overway onto our sites. We have an existing site with two curb cuts on 36, 37. We're going to abandon those. We're going to create two new curb cuts on Longhorn Drive. And we're proposing inline retail with the right uses on the site. So the site is approximately 4.38 acres. Previously, our open space was about 31.7%. Right now, we're at 33.2%. Required minimum is 30%, so we're about a percent and a half above on that. The building came down and square footage a little bit from our last meeting. And another thing that we've done in response to the comments we got was refine the permitted uses that we're going to ask for on the site. So what we've also done is specify which uses will happen in which tenant space. Previously, we had a potential drive-through use on the west end cap of the site. So previously, we're going to have a drive-through restaurant use in the west end cap of the site and potentially one on the east end cap of the site. We are limiting the drive-through restaurant use to the west end cap only. We are also specifying a general merchandise use in AICS Code 453 only in the eastern end cap. And then we'll have about eight or nine other uses distributed on the interior. Right now, we're anticipating three tenant spaces with a potential of up to four. So the way that that's affected the site plan is that by refining the uses and limiting the restaurant use to the west end cap, we've reduced the parking. And there've been kind of trickle-down effects as a result of that. So because we have less parking required, we're able to increase the open space. We're also able to increase the drive aisle width a little bit around the perimeter of the building. That's also enabled us to save some of the existing trees up here in the northeast corner of the site. So that was a request that we got. So okay to hand with that previous area is increased and previous areas come down. Going to scroll back up here a little bit. This is the original site plan that we submitted. So we had a little bit less landscaping. We had a little bit larger building. We had a little bit more parking. We got some comments before our first meeting. This is the plan that we brought in at the last meeting. So we tried to get some screening in front of the building. We tried to isolate our drive-through lanes from the two-way circulation around the building. And this is the current site plan. So I think what we've done here is pretty good job of responding to your comments. We've heard the comments that we got originally from Mr. Weed before our first hearing. We heard the comments that we got our discussion. We've fine-tuned this a little bit, honed it up. We believe in full compliance with the code. And we think we have a pretty good application here. We've gone out of our way to try and outline all the different ways we comply with the code, what we're asking for exactly, cross-referencing where you can find all of that information in the application. We had comments about the open space last time, what does and doesn't qualify. So this is it that kind of outlines what we're counting as open space and what is merely just not paved. And again, we're well over the requirement. We got a comment on the landscape plan, trying to make that a little bit more intuitive. So we added landscape. Made sure we have cross-references in various code requirements that inform what we're putting on the site. We've seen a total of 12 trees here. I think previously we committed to one. We have a single joint identification sign. We're proposing sort of south central of the building on 36, 37. And we've got some signage exhibits kind of outlining. And this is preliminary. We're going to come back in with the full site package once we know who these potential users are going to be. But all the provisions that we made are that any site package we come in with is going to be under the code required maximum. So even with four tenants here, should that happen, we also have a little bit of leftover space there to add directional signage from 36, or I'm sorry, from Longhorn Drive to direct people into the site and direct traffic throughout the site. So that's going to be kind of a branded wave on the inside. We don't know exactly what that's going to look like yet. But we'd have one of those that are the curb cuts on Longhorn. We got comments on the elevations of the buildings. So there was general concern that we had to be browned. We've lightened that up a little bit. We tried to match some of the architecture that we have at the other sites. There's one of the Hyatts that I believe Mr. Weed had the opportunity to visit. So in many other regards, this is going to be very similar to that site, the architecture and the circulation around the site. And then it's also has some material samples if you're curious about that. So I don't know that there are any other specific updates from the last plan that we discussed. Again, this is more of an iteration of the site plan that we still had running on you at the last meeting. So in response to the comments we got on our original application and the comments that we got from the discussion we had last month, we think we've got this dialed in pretty well. Obviously, we're here to answer any questions you might have on the materials, so. Thank you for that. Questions, comments from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I do have a couple of quick questions and a comment. The comment is, appreciate your acknowledgement at the beginning. And I have to say, this is a marked improvement from the last presentation. The two questions I have is, one, just based on where you, if I understood you correctly, you said that you're going to limit the restaurant to just the west side of the building?
Correct.
The drawings that we have, I'm looking at exhibit E3 in tab 3, shows two drive-through lanes. So I'm not clear what the second purpose of the second line is.
Correct. So that would be in AICS Code 453, that is just general merchandise. And we are anticipating that would be a drive-through use, but not food service use.
Not a restaurant, okay.
Yes.
Thank you for the clarification. And the other question I had is, in tab 5, exhibit A6, you mentioned if a restaurant does utilize the west side of the building, that there would be a menu board. I looked through all the different exhibits. I could not find the, I found where you very clearly outlined the size, the measurements. I did not see where the placement would be and the orientation would be. Okay, could you clarify that for us?
Yeah, so if there were to be a restaurant use in this west end cap, the menu board would be right around here in this vicinity.
So it would not be on the divider. It would be on the building side. Okay. So that's probably what that little mark is that I couldn't figure out where it was.
I do believe there's a small table on the site plan.
That makes sense. All right, thank you.
Yes, sir. So in your presentation, you mentioned home. It sounded like you may have contradicted yourself slightly. So you'd mentioned that you're going to be well over the requirement of open space by this change?
Yes.
But then your information is showing that you're going to be at 33.2%.
Yes, I believe the minimum is 30%.
I'm seeing that along the road. I see.
Correct.
More and then this going up. So you're going to be, you're going to have 3.2% more open space than required?
Yes. So we're up from the last time. We're also over the minimum.
In all possible versions of the new, regardless of if you smoosh four or three in that?
Correct.
As far as same footprint that you're going to have with the new?
Yeah, the building footprint won't change. Maybe we change the demise of the building on the interior, but the site plan would not be affected.
Okay.
Yeah, the way that the building would stand up for tenants only would be the, right now, the right end cap is a larger unit based upon the planned retailer that would be taking that spot. They require 3,000 square foot, so it's about half the building. If theirs gets cut in half, we will thus reminisce the building for.
Okay, I think we're then correct.
Not expected.
Okay, I thought I might be mishearing some of the requirements. Have you guys clarify rather than me make a judgment off of something I might be mishearing? And then is what, what types of general merchandising?
It's a pretty broad category.
Could you have that, that offer where you can just drive up and pick up? I'm not as versed in that, like, I've seen, for example, not necessarily general merchandising, but like dry cleaners have like, I think, Swan or Waterbury used to have where that door where people could pull up or Tide when there was around did that. That's not like general merchandising. So what's like an example that I can kind of get a go from the picture?
Sure. So we talked about this in our last meeting. It's possible that we could have a dispensary in the site that is a use that could make use of a drive-through window. You know, any retailer of anything could, in theory, utilize a drive-through window. If you had some kind of specialty store, you know, I can, I would struggle to make up an example on the fly, but.
And with just more online orders being processed in store places, you know, like with, like Staples and some of them during COVID. And we're like, hey, just order it and pull up to the curb instead.
So I don't know. You're getting comic books and you order a specialty comic book from Japan and you want to roll through and get it without showering and getting it out of your car.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to picture what.
I'd be speculating, but there are uses.
Okay, yeah. It's very broad categories. Anything that fits under the usual. Okay, that's it for now.
Edit, Matt?
Yeah, that's still not yet.
I have, just I see you brought samples for the architectural. Could you walk me through what, what is going where in your, just so I have an idea? I mean, I think I'm trying to get an idea of it, just I want to make sure I understand what's going there.
So, and I'll sort of, I'll hold and then I'll pass this one. So the main corners of the building, as well as the water table, sort of around the front, three quarters of the building, is going to be this limestone. So this is the same product that we were proposing last time. We went back to the drawing board, went to a different color palette. This was more gray tone, white and gray tone for this one. That's going to sort of anchor the two sides of the building.
Got it.
Staying on the front of the building, this hardy panel is the, is the white sort of verticals that you're seeing there on the front of the building. There would be a gray trim that sort of matches the brick painted this color, this iron ore color. And this iron ore is also going to be the color that the metal canopy is going to paint. So it'll be a sort of. And then towards the back of the building, the reveries might not show this very well, but on the elevations, we switched to a split-facing C and U product. So the base is this gray color to more mimic the limestone a little bit more. And then up above is white, which mimics sort of the front of the building, that white hardy panel.
And that's, it's going to be the textured, is that what?
Correct.
Okay, so you, as this is textured, sort of this front face is how it is. Okay, so that's the rear of the building?
Correct, yeah. And so we're similar massing on the corners to where that thing comes up a little bit higher, helping us screen any rooftop units, et cetera. We sort of stack like this. And then while this isn't illustrated as the hope is in on our other units that we've done with the same architectural element, we haven't needed to screen the rooftop units. They've been, the roof itself is sat low enough to where those parapets screen those units with no problem. If, once we develop this in the US or Florida, this is the cityscapes panel that I mentioned in our last meeting. So this is, it can either go in this vertical orientation or this horizontal orientation. But this is the color, which yet again, we chose to sort of match the lighter gray tones that's coming out from that limestone.
Got it.
Thank you.
John, anything?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Okay, start with exhibit E3, please. Site dimension plan. And so even though you're limiting the restaurant to the west end of the building, the east side would likely, it sounds like it would very likely require a drive-through. And we talked about the, the vertical barriers there on the west and the east. In Mr. Weed's comments on the staff, based on the concern of the traffic flow to drive-through areas and then a two-way traffic sections outside that barrier. The area that creates the, the drive-through inside, what is the construction of that? Because I found like a couple of different, couple of different descriptions. In fact, in one of the, one of the colored drawings of the, of the building, it shows actually just two striped lines. If I'm not mistaken, I don't have that at my fingertips, but it's in the book somewhere. Yeah, just talk about the construction of that, please. I know there's a curb in there somehow.
Yeah, it'll just be a straight 18-inch curb.
18-inch high?
It'll be six inches high.
Six inches high, 18 wide?
Six inches high, six inches wide. It's 18, it's a foot buried in underneath the pavement, essentially.
Okay, so it's a foot high, a foot off the ground, right?
It'll just be six inches.
Six inches off the ground?
Yeah.
Okay, and how, how thick?
It'll be six inches and then the space between the curb will be grass.
Okay, space between the curb, okay.
Yeah, so it'll be six inches around. There should be, I believe, two foot then, two, three feet between back curbs. And that'll be grassed.
Okay, so it's not just a
Yeah, it won't just be a straight concrete aisle.
It's two curbs and grass in between?
Yeah.
Okay, what's the width of the grass?
I think it's down to two feet on the interior. So it's all three feet wide.
Okay, I don't know if you showed that anywhere. And I too appreciate the, the upgrade in the, in the book and everything like that. But there were a lot of areas in your text where you copied our chapter 16, point by point. And many times it said, refer to tab 3, you know, E3 for the more information, stuff like that. And where there could and really should have been calculations in the text. There might be calculations on your exhibits, but okay, that's not necessarily a showstopper here, but you know, I'm just saying, like, I looked at this stuff and I struggled to find this. So is there a diagram of this or a description in the text?
There isn't in the text. If, I mean, granted, it's relatively small, this exhibit, so this is exhibit E3 up on the screen here. We have the mentions for it. I don't, the construction of the curve is a I don't, the construction of the curve is a, it'd be a construction detail that we don't really provide at this point. But yeah, it hopefully the answer that Jeff gave satisfies what you're looking for there, but.
Okay, well, one, one more item.
Okay.
In relation to that. See if I have mine. Okay, go to exhibit D1 and tab four. It shows those. Drive, the drive-through, what do you call it, just a drive-through barrier or the drive-through strip? Okay, not the drive-through itself. What are, what are we calling it, the border, right? Let's call it the border. Okay. Uh, that's labeled as three. A, in a. In a hexagon and the code says three to five inch diameter river rock mulch, minimum of five inches. So is it grass or is it river rock or both?
Well, no, we prefer river rock.
Yeah.
From a maintenance standpoint, river rocks.
Okay. Are you counting that as pervious surface?
We are counting it as pervious surface right now. So I count it as open space.
Okay. So, and I've looked through here, maybe I just missed it. I don't, I don't see the detailed calculations of the pervious versus impervious. You've got this nice diagram here, I think it's tab two of the, of all the green and the gray someplace. Hang on this.
Yeah, it's, there's a site that they were there that should have that breakdown.
Uh, is this, this one here, C1?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, right after it. Okay. Okay, that does show, that matches at least your P M O summary here. It says open space 33.2. So that shows there. And it does show your, your drive-through areas as pervious area and not open space. Okay. So you count it as pervious area. And the, the portion and, and what's, like take that right, that eastern drive-through there. Uh, what's the green area, the dark green area between the actual asphalt and the building? It's supposed to be pervious area. What, what is that? More river rock?
Um, it could be, yes.
Okay, and count as pervious area, I, I can, I live with that. Okay. And for the life of me, I looked at this and I, I was going to try, try to get all the dimensions and everything, which don't exist on that and figure out. I mean, I don't bottom line, I don't see calculations on pervious area or open space. I see sheets that say what it is, but I don't see the calculations. And I shouldn't have to try to do your math. I should just review your math. Okay, and it's a pretty, it's a pretty big deal because you know, if, if you have too much impervious area and you don't read the code, then you have to do something else.
Sure. Um, we do have the numbers on there. They, I mean, it's small, 11 by 17 and I apologize for that. But over here on the site data table, we do have the breakdown right there. I think it's in our narrative as well, but this is the, the sort of one-stop shop for it.
Okay, it shows. Okay, it's got the square feet. So I'm supposed to assume that math on all these green things is accurate, I guess. I mean, I look at it, I say, wow, there's a, there's a lot of impervious area there. And I can't believe that they say, yeah, wow, that's, that's, yeah, that's 64.2%. Yeah, I can, I can see that, you know, I, I, I kind of look at the little sections there. Okay, cause like Dave mentioned last time, we had an app that came in and tried to count, you know, flower pots that were on an area of asphalt. And maybe the asphalt was cut away and there was earth underneath and they tried to count that as pervious area. Okay, maybe technically it is, but you know, when you're looking at this massive amount of acreage, you know, it's a little ridiculous to try to count 27 flower pots as part of the pervious area. So I, I'm interested in the math as how you arrived at this. I could trust your numbers and say, oh yeah, that's, that's probably right, but I, I don't see the math. And you've got areas here, it's not all squared areas, there are a lot of arcs in there. So that's just not length times width, that's something else.
Right.
So I'm not trying to give you a hard time, I just don't see the, you know, the, the calculations on this.
Yeah, we use AutoCAD to calculate those areas. So whenever create a polygon for it and AutoCAD has features in it that we can calculate the area with it.
Okay. Are you happy with that, Dave?
Yeah, I think so. If, if you want further numbers, maybe they could supply those in the next two weeks. Help satisfy and be in our records.
Yeah, tell the, let AutoCAD do, print it out like, um, you know, I'd like to see the calculation on the, on the north end of there. At, at oval type shaped area, you know, what the square footage of that is. And you've got, you know, little pieces and parts, some of a rectangle, some of our, you know, arcs on top of a rectangle. And if you wanted to try to square that off, and I mean, I was going to kind of try to do that. See if you were accurate, but, and, and you do have a little, a little bit of square footage to play for, you know, play with. Cause you know, you are over the requirement on the open space. But yeah, if you can, uh, get, get some actual numbers, I'd appreciate seeing that. We could maybe include that in the application.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we'll take it to the audience to the, any comment?
Yeah, I, as far as the.
Tell them who you are, Chris.
Chris, no, Chris Stevens, 5141's Drive. In terms of the use, I don't necessarily have an issue. The design, all that, I, I do have concern. It's a, it's a small footprint to try to do two drive-through lanes. And when we look at it, it's a comparable site, I believe, to the MG Sunbury on the corner with Chipotle. So I'm very familiar with kind of the traffic flow in and out of there without knowing the specific uses. I think it's hard to know how that's going to impact things. And whether or not it's going to attract, let's say, a lunch crowd, a working crowd with trucks and trailers and all that kind of stuff. So part of the issue we already have is on that street. There's no place for trucks, trailers. And so the parking on that street, which is a very narrow road already, now we're adding more traffic. And so when I look at like parking spaces, similar site plan, what is there, maybe 50? It seems like it's less parking spaces than the smaller Chipotle unit, two doors down. Plus we're adding two drive-throughs.
And I don't know, I don't know if you were, if you came in to hear whether only one of those is restaurant use, one of those drive-throughs.
True.
Were you here for that?
Yeah.
Okay, I just want to make.
So and maybe, maybe that'll make a difference, but.
Yeah, I don't know.
There's a lot of, just a lot of mystery around who the uses are, what, how it's going to be used. I'm just pointing out, we have a smaller building on a similar sized lot just down the road.
Agreed, no, I, I just.
Traffic, so you're trying to get people in and out of the parking spaces and navigate. So it's a little tight. And again, maybe within code. So it's not even necessary an objection, just I'm pointing this out. I don't know what the use are, what kind of restaurant, and if it's going to attract a certain clientele. Is, is that a public road now, that, that portion? Still, that's still private?
Correct.
So I, I, and I would say then maybe the township doesn't even have control on whether vehicles can park on that road, but just things to consider.
Certainly.
So like I said, in terms of the use and the look, I mean, it's an empty lot. I do have concern though, that it's, it's a bigger building with more tenants, seems to have less parking. And the, the traffic pattern inside, and then whether or not it's going to impact Longhorn. The very last thing I would say is from reading the report with ODOT or the county, I can't remember which one, but they have no, uh, they're not planning on changing the light pattern. So we're adding more and more things out there with no relief at the traffic lighting. And the biggest issue you have is if you're coming south on Four Winds, that left turn traffic, that's where all it is, all, all the traffic is. If you have traffic on the other side, it's a long time to wait before those cars can start to go. And sometimes you get four cars out. So just again, additional consideration as we're adding things. I don't know if the conversation can be had with them for a little bit of relief, but.
Those are my thoughts. There's no arrow yet on that.
Right.
Yeah, that's a county.
So you, you literally have to wait until all the other traffic. So anyway, just my thoughts.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Would you like me to address that?
Sure.
Okay. I, I think to the point that you made, it's, it's not to the restaurant uses, so we probably don't have peak hours at the same time for those two drive-through uses this.
Yeah, and I was just making sure he, he was here to know that. I don't like with it, to his point, without knowing the uses, it's hard, it's hard to even predict it. But I understand his concern and it could be, you know, it could be a kind of.
And the clients could change over time too.
Sure, certainly.
Must have had some sort of restrictions.
Begin, sorry, I didn't, I wasn't.
No, yeah, that's, I mean, really, that's, the, the main point is that the parking reflects the uses as required in the code. So we are slightly above what would be required based on the uses that we are asking for on the site. The drive-through window on the east end cap would be more akin to maybe like a pharmacy drive-through window. It's not going to be, it's not going to get the same intensity of use as the drive-through restaurant use that was anticipated for the west side. So we did get a list of potential tenants for the space that, you know, again, none of this has been firmed up, but conversations are happening. So there's a Happy's Pizza and Sliders, if you're familiar with that, that could potentially be restaurant use. Interior, maybe a nail salon, hair salon. There's a cell shop that has expressed an interest, a burger place unnamed at this time. In the interior, we're going to add like a shoe store, Red Wing possibly is one group that we've been in discussion with. A small medical office, there could maybe be something like a, a donuts as the restaurant use on western end cap. So, you know, that's probably more of a morning peak hour than a lunch peak hour. There's insurance companies that are actually interested in the interior space. And then we have, you know, there's, there's a lot of different groups and franchisees that work with the owner. And you know, they might expand into this area too, but nothing has been committed to at this point, but.
Understood. Thank you. Back to the board? You have a comment? No, there.
Sorry.
Didn't see you there.
Mary Howard, 1765. After listening to this for multiple times, um, the comments I had were similar. I drove by this lot because I just hadn't studied it as a lot. And one of my concerns is always the dual drive-throughs and the confusion with them. I understand that they're both not food oriented, which is great. But if you've been by a CBS drive-through lane, it can back up around the building if, and not that that dispensary may be that, but I'm just, that is a concern in that it's a tight area. And if you're trying to manipulate vehicles around there in an already tight area, that is a concern. As somebody who drives a big truck, it's a concern. And so just, I appreciate you guys doing all your due diligence with this. It also, it's confusing as to how they're going to divide up the building. And I understand they don't have tenants yet, but the parking and stuff could be an issue if you have six people, six different tenants. And I understand it's regulations, but it seems a little crazy. I do like the architecture rankings a lot. The building is a lot happier, more pleasant now.
My understanding is it's three, possibly four tenants, right?
Correct.
Which was reduced from the original five constant.
Oh, I was thinking it was five.
That was the original concept, yeah.
Okay.
Put it down.
That's much better.
And also they addressed some of our, the concerns we expressed in terms of the traffic flow and added some what I thought were clear and good directional signs, provisions to avoid the not logical driving patterns of some people.
I'm sure if it passes you guys, then it's more than sufficient, but just speaking up. Thank you.
Thank you. Now to the board? You have questions, comments?
Uh, Mr. Chairman? Okay. On the landscaping, I appreciate what you've done there, colorizing it is always nice. And yeah, good effort on saving the trees. Okay, on exhibit D3. Okay. Shows the trees that are already there and you're going to remove a tree number 17, this is a Catalpa. Okay, just understand that.
Can't exactly, we have a Catalpa right on top of the drive-through or parking lot, that's fine.
Then tree number 13, that's back in the northeast corner. It's a Hackberry, seven inch caliper. And why are you removing that?
So I think when we look at how the site is going to get graded out, that's going to be somewhat largely impacted by the limits of disturbance. So it's more a recognition of the fact that the critical root zone is probably going to be damaged and a damaged tree could be a liability. So we kind of made the decision that one would go based on that.
Okay, fine. Looks like you've got a much bigger Hackberry, tree number two in there, which is going to be saved. So that's good, good native tree, good for wildlife. Now you have three maples that are off-site, but kind of impact you. Do you know what species those are?
I do not know what species those are. I didn't personally do the tree survey, I could probably figure that out by driving by the site.
Okay, yeah, now, now I just wonder if you knew, because if they're, if they're big old silver maples, that could be a problem down the road. So anyway, just be aware of that if you own the, and I'm sure you are, you might want to look or with your neighbors on, on that, if one's looking bad, you know, it might be a, a good idea to, you know, do some major pruning or removal at some point. I don't know what they look like either, I was just curious. I know that the city of Delaware has a whole bunch of gigantic silver maples in the historic area and sidewalks, you know, going up here and there and.
There is definitely.
Kind of a, kind of a dirty tree, you know, as, as far as, yeah, sap or whatever. So anyway, just, just an observation there, but yeah, nice job on the, on the trees you're putting in. And I think the variety is really, really good, so yeah, nice, nice job on that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Reed, any comment?
No, I have no comment.
I have a question then, the summary. So is there, are there new calculations here that is just to be added to the book that we have? Or is this just a helpful summary of what you've done?
It's, it's a helpful summary, it's just sort of an outline, it's nice to have because you have this shiny booklet with all this information. As you said, you gotta flip through and find. you said, you got to flip through five different pages to get some answers, so that's kind of the high-level stuff in place.
Okay, great, thank you.
Got a motion from the board?
Yeah, move to approve application number 25-086, Cass Corporation or the Berkshire Retail Plaza. I'll second that.
Okay, we have the motion and a second to a roll call, please.
John?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Motion is approved. And that's that, right, Davis is FEMA, right?
Yeah, correct. I mean, you're good to go for tomorrow. I think I would like to follow back up on John's comment, that if you could share those within the next two weeks, the calculations on your green space pervious and pervious, and that way I can just put in our book, and we keep here as a master. It'd be great.
To clarify, if we just put a label, or maybe where it's a little too tight, a leader with a line pointing to that particular space that labels what is within that space, would that suffice?
Yeah, I mean, I taught math a long time ago, so I kind of like to check especially green space on the development, and I was looking for dimensions and trying to figure out, yeah, are you on target or close? And I was unable to. So, anything you could supply from the oral AutoCAD, that would be good. I'd like to, you know, to sort of double-check it for myself. Thank you.
Maybe one other thing we should have put in the motion, but not necessary, because I know Mr. Coughlin is a really nice gentleman, and he'll be tickled to death to mow that lot within the next three weeks, because you're not doing any construction this fall, and it is looking pretty rough. So, I think it would be a good thing for Mr. Coughlin to get that mowed down again for the winter. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much.
I have no other business.
All right. Motion to adjourn. I'll move.
He's out of here.